Committee meeting to order. Everybody saw the agenda is just pretty basic. We're just here to discuss what we know so far, where we want to go as far as discussion. So, last time I'd asked that people, just for their own exercise, do pro and con sheets. Does everybody have a chance to do that? Okay, good. Pardon me?
Sort of.
Sort of. And I know that we have since received some updated financial information from our finance director, Brenda. So, where would you like to begin?
What I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, could we ask more questions to some of the
Yeah.
services here, maybe?
Yeah.
To just gather some more information?
Is that what you want to do first? Ask questions? More questions?
I don't know if you guys, I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'm sure that, I mean, I know that, I'm sure everybody's got questions anyway, so that's a good thing. It's just, and I wouldn't think that we'll have just a, I think they'll be answering questions throughout the whole period.
Okay.
So, but we could start, if that's what you want to do. Paul, who would you like to talk to first? Ask questions out first?
So, can I start with, can I start with Josh or the St. Croix EMS?
Sure. Josh?
So, thanks for coming tonight, Josh.
Yep.
Today, I should say. So, I guess my first question is, on kind of late Friday afternoon, there was a report for, by Brenda with the city, you know, finances. And I'm guessing you've seen that, but it talks about, for option A or option B, either the 45 or 80% increases in charges, that we would most likely run out of cash in the year 2021, or by the end of 2021, under both options. So, I guess my question is, do those numbers seem accurate to you? Or do you have a sense of, I know you're not a finance guy, but I know when I got that, that was pretty concerning to me, just seeing that report, so.
Right. I mean, I saw Brenda's report that she put out. I wasn't provided, I mean, I read the same report that you guys read. I wasn't, I didn't see any numbers that she ran, what numbers she came up with, what numbers she used, as far as all that goes, so.
So, if I'm not mistaken, the billable runs are 1,142 that were based on that report, and that would be for a year long. Does that sound like an accurate number of, like, is that the average billable runs we would have?
Can be, but, I mean, we can't, I can't stand up here and predict what kind, how many calls we're going to get in a year.
Right.
I mean, we could get less than that, we could double that, we could, could not do any, so.
Okay. And then my next question is about staffing. I think you've done a really good job with stabilizing the staffing in St. Croix EMS, and I was looking over some of the figures that, in October, we were staffed 103%, in November, 105, and in December, 96%, and that was of 2018. So, I guess my question is, how confident are you that we can continue to staff our EMS service in the future? Do you feel, just like your confidence level with that?
I feel very confident as well, you know, if we're, you know, selected for, you know, as the service for the City of Hudson and municipalities, I think, just, you know, for everything to stabilize and, you know, city and municipalities to show support, I think the staffing will fix itself, or continue to improve and continue to be better.
Okay.
There's just too much uncertainty right now, and people are still working other jobs and looking for other jobs.
Right. And then another kind of out there question a little bit, but, so, from the RFP that you submitted, there's a possibility to join the new Richmond area ambulance service. I guess this is not any RFP, but it's just a curiosity question. Is, has there ever been a consideration to partner with River Falls? Or would you see any potential for, again, not any RFP, but in a sense of, would that be any kind of possibility in your mind in terms of, you know, future potential, I guess?
Yeah, it's always a possibility. It's worth sit down, having the talk, conversation with, with River Falls in regards to, you know, partnering together and see what we can do together.
Okay. That's all my questions on, for that service.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? Is it Josh while he's here? You know, I've got, I've got a couple of questions, maybe just one. The response times, so we're trying to get apples to apples, so Sarah and I were actually out at Lakeview Tuesday?
Monday.
Last week. And it was cold, I remember that. But, so, we're just trying to make sure that we understand that response times, when we're talking about them, are apples to apples. And Lakeview was saying that their response time begins at, as soon as a call comes in.
Correct.
Moment the call comes in. And then there was another time that they use when they punch the button or whatever, once they get in the ambulance, and that's like the route time or something. In, in your response on response times, it had to do with in the truck, right? The moment they're in the truck? So, why don't you run us through that, just so that we all understand that there, it seems to be a bit of a difference in how we're calculating response times?
The way our response times are calculated is from the moment we go en route to the moment we get on scene. That's our response time.
So, when you say en route, what does that mean? So, if a call comes in and we've got somebody on call that needs to get here, this has happened, that would need to get to the ambulance from someplace first, and then hop in the ambulance, and then take off?
They go en route, once they get to the ambulance, medical, the paramedic goes en route immediately, within 90 seconds. Ambulance crew, which 90% of the time, they're here. They walk across the street, get in the truck, say they're en route, and then, you know, they check out on scene, and that timeframe is our response time.
And how do we know that they're en route? Do they have that same thing, that they punch a button or something in the?
They radio dispatch on the radio.
Okay.
And physically say they're en route.
Okay.
That technology's coming from St. Croix County within the next two to three years, supposedly.
Now, with their CAD, with their CAD upgrade?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
And they keep track, then, of the time of call to the time you're en route?
Dispatch does, and we also track it with our reporting software that we do for
Gotcha.
Image Trend.
Okay. Anybody else?
And just the new information you gave us, can you talk a little bit about the estimate? I'm assuming this is for a new station?
Yep, that's the estimate that I handed out, that I had done just by a normal, you know, a normal builder, not a big company like Five Bugles or any other big companies out there, just to see what the price would look like if a normal general contractor did the work. And that's the, just the guesstimate that he gave on what it would cost, so.
And is this for renovation of the ward building?
Correct.
Okay.
Josh, back to the, if you're, are you done, Paul?
I guess.
Response times, you don't have an average?
Average is 7.12, I believe, is in that paperwork.
We have a sheet that has all the different response times listed across it.
That's the one that just was sent out last?
Yeah, there's one of the several, yeah.
It's like, it's like page six of seven, or something like that, that has the averages.
I think there are, when I look at it, I think about the response time, you know, I look at from the time we receive the call to the time our ambulance is on site. To me, that's, that's the response times that we need to be looking at. So, I guess my, my question about, you know, we have an average of notify to en route, which is, I think, is one of the numbers, I think, is important. And then the other one is en route to arrived, and that's the 7.13 you were talking about. So, the notify to en route, we have two, sometimes we will have two different vehicles responding with perhaps different times. Which number are we averaging here?
State ambulance.
We could have, we could have the lead, the lead with the paramedic, and we could have the ambulance. Which one are we looking at here?
The data that I pull from is, it's pulling the ambulance data.
Okay.
So, not the, not the chase vehicle.
So, we will have, this is, we'll actually have a paramedic on scene before this average of 2.27 minutes?
Should, yes.
Most, most of the time, that's the way that it's going to work. It's the way it's designed to work.
Yep.
That's not always the case.
Not always, but.
I mean, we can't, it's not like, that's part of the program, that the paramedic's going to be there before the ambulance.
That is the program, yes.
Well, but I mean, it doesn't always happen that way.
Do we track that, Josh?
It should, what, if the paramedic's there?
If the paramedic's there first, do we track that?
It will on, on the dispatch times, yes, on the dispatch time reports. You can pull all that data.
We could find out.
But our, on our run reports, where I pull all the data for our response times, it only, we only put in the ambulance response times. We don't put in the chase vehicle times.
How often is the chase vehicle manned?
Every day.
With a person? 24/7?
24/7, 365.
And how often would the ambulance get there before the chase vehicle? 1%?
Probably a handful of times, maybe.
What, what is the paramedic able to do when they're there before the ambulance?
Everything. There's nothing that they can't do, you know, before the ambulance gets there, so. Their full scope of practice.
Who would we contact, or can someone from the city contact dispatch and get that? You know, the percentage of times that the paramedic is there first versus, that'd be great. That'd be really helpful.
Yeah, as long as they, you know, it might take them a little bit to pull that kind of data, but I'm sure they can.
Can you contact them, or do you want one of us to?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any other type of presentation that you want to give while we're answering all the questions and stuff, too?
I don't have, just, I didn't realize it was a presentation that we're supposed to make today. I was just told to.
There isn't necessarily, but.
Yeah, there.
I will say that because of the, I think there were only three of us that went out to Lakeview when I was out there, I asked them if they could bring their stuff in to show everybody what we saw when we were there.
No, otherwise I don't have anything.
Josh, you had a chance to look over the numbers from the proposals of, that Brenda sent out. And, and to suggest that, for lack of better terms, the financial situation looks pretty dang bleak if we were to stay with St. Croix EMS. What are your thoughts or your concerns on whether that should be something we should be concerned with, at least to break even? I'm not looking to make a profit if we stay with St. Croix EMS. But to absorb the cost that this, even with the 15% rate, let me see, it's seven of eight proposal, for example, that's $738,000 in the hole. Short of cash, and that's in the year 2021. It already would start going into the hole in 2020, which is a year away. I'm having a hard time justifying this performa, if you will, to pass on to our constituents, our taxpayers, the end user. Whether at 45%, whether at 85%, realistically, any businessperson will tell you this is a no-go. You wouldn't do it. Doesn't make sense.
Right. I mean, like I said, I wasn't provided with any, I don't know what numbers she ran. I'll, I saw the same final report that you guys saw, so, I don't know what numbers you ran.
Brenda, is there anything that you could add to the conversation that I could understand? The deficits and that Josh might be able to kind of address a little bit easier? And that's with a $41 increase in 2020, 21 per capita.
Correct. When, what I did is, I contacted the billing company, and what we, I gave him the, to do the 45% rate increase and the 80% rate increase, and I said, what would that generate in additional revenue? And what we did is, he and I agreed that we would, he would go back to 2017 data service and subtract out the inter-facility calls and the town of Hudson. Because those calls that were there in 2017 aren't there today. And so, he did that, and then he used that information to predict the additional revenue with those rate increases. Because as you remember, the proposal that came in from St. Croix EMS, it had, it appeared to have the transfers in there, and so we couldn't, I wasn't comfortable in using those numbers, so I felt more comfortable with going back to the billing company because they have the history. And so, when he came back with that information, he gave me the additional revenue that would be generated at that 45 and that 80%.
So, help me wrap my head around this. Bear with me, because it's not so good in there some. So, if we are going to raise it per capita, a $41, for example, and then we're charging them per capita, that's coming out of our general account, correct?
Correct.
But then, we're going to charge another percentage, correct?
To the users?
Yes.
To the patients, yes. So, it's two, two revenue sources.
So, in essence, if I called the ambulance, I'm going to get charged and taxed twice.
Correct. And if you didn't call the ambulance, you'll be taxed?
Once.
Once.
But if I use it, I'm taxed twice?
Correct. Correct.
So, double taxation.
Two different revenue streams coming into the city and the partners for St. Croix EMS.
You guys can laugh and smile all you want, that's the truth.
It's not double taxation, Randy.
It is, too. You're getting hit twice as a taxpayer in the City of Hudson, or your municipalities.
For, as a taxpayer, you get hit once, and as a user, you get hit once, not as a taxpayer.
No. Yes, sorry to interrupt you.
The, the patient that took the ambulance, that owns a home in the City of Hudson, the village of North Hudson, the town of Troy, they would receive on their property tax bill, the city levy, and part of that goes to pay the ambulance, and then if that person took an ambulance, they would receive a bill from the St. Croix EMS for that service, if that's your question, yes.
Thank you.
I have another question for you, Brenda. So, taking a look at the 2017 data, taking out the town of Hudson, taking out the transfers, I would assume that to the end user, we bring up that pricing, to bring up the rates to them, to the end user, there'd be a certain amount of, of bad credit or non-payment. Was that factored in at all, or not?
I let the billing company run the numbers, but they, I would have been more conservative with that bad debt, because I think at 80% increase, those bills are going to be more and more, or less and less affordable, and so that bad debt percentage is going to go up. So, I think the numbers that I gave you are the best picture of the revenue stream. I may have been a little bit more conservative, but I wanted to use their predictions on that.
Do you know what percentage you used for bad debt?
I don't, I've got the dollar amounts, not the percentages, so.
I'd like to see that in comparison to what it is now.
Yep. If I can get that for you? Yep.
Cool. Thank you.
One other quick.
And like I said, though, Bill, not to interrupt, but the percentage would be the same as it is now, because we didn't increase that bad debt percentage.
One other quick question, Brenda. Sorry, Bill. If we were to assume that we went with Lakeview, that, that per capita charge goes away?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Brenda, on the 80%, 45%, I know we haven't been able to get any definitive on this. What is, what is the likelihood that the insurance companies are going to agree to, to rate hikes like that?
When we were looking at rate increases last fall, I had talked to EMS medical billing, and what they do is, they look at the average of our increases, and since 2011, we had increased it 8% per year, between 8 and 10, and so they were comfortable that, usual and customary for us in front of a insurance company was the 8 to 10%. We felt comfortable with going the 15% this year, because remember, we're not billing for medical supplies, and that's about 5% of our revenue. So, we were at that, that threshold of 10% that we thought they wouldn't call not usual and customary, because I've received explanation of benefits at my house from my insurance company, and if they, if I get a bill for my medical doctor, and they consider her out of network, and it's a little bit higher than what they're used to paying, they'll only pay up to that certain amount, and then I'm responsible for the rest. So, once we, we don't know where that threshold is, but once we go above it, then they would call it, it's not usual and customary, and we would predict that they wouldn't reimburse, the insurance company wouldn't pay, they would pass that charge on to the patient. Does anybody have any questions about that, or?
Would it be on a per insurance company basis?
It is on a per insurance company basis, yep.
There's no standards that, or?
Correct.
So, some of them might say, okay, we'll, we'll.
Pay it.
We'll accept, well, we'll, we'll pay it, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll pay it, and some might say, we'll take 15%, some say, we'll take a 20% increase, but.
Correct. And they have this, they have better access probably to the data that we do. We do the survey every year, where we look at ourselves compared to area ambulance services. So, they have that data, and they probably have more than that data, and as you know, with our 19 rates, we are above average on our rates already.
I'm sorry, above average for the area?
Compared to the people that we compare to, compared to the other ambulance services that we compared to, the New Richmond, the River Falls, the Baldwin. And that came out late on Friday under the, the second memo, so you've got that survey. Anything else?
You know, I'm looking at the sheet, obviously, that you gave us, the numbers from last week. On page three, I see that you're considering, I presume this is with the collaboration with Josh, capital outlay in the above projections of $40,000 in 19, $167,020 in 20, and $131,021. Obviously, I mean, that's just for those three years, and those years are now calculated into your per capita and your other numbers that you have here.
Correct.
What about beyond that? Ambulances, purchases of ambulances?
In the second memo that I sent out on Friday, attachment C on that has additional capital outlay, and we are, we have an ambulance out there in 2023. That would be our biggest ticket item. And the reason I wanted to give you that per capita is because the, or, I'm sorry, the capital, is it goes up and down, and so when you were looking at those cash numbers in my first memo, I wanted you to understand why there were ups and downs in that cash, and it's because of the capital. And when I did the projections for the next two years, I based that on two ambulances, staffed 24/7, with two paramedics and two EMTs, and remember, we've lost a third of our billable calls. And so, I've taken those billable calls out of there, but I haven't lowered the expenditures at this point.
What, what has been the dollar amount of the default rate unpaid?
Oh, the bad debt?
Yeah.
I'll go back and calculate it.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, and remember, it's important to remember, too, that 52% of our calls are Medicare, and so those just come right off the top. There's nothing we can do about that, and so then we work down from that, and so I'll get that for you.
Okay, just, do we consider anything above and beyond Medicare reimbursement, bad debt?
We do. Yep, absolutely.
That's considered bad debt?
Yep. So, we, when we consider bad debt, we call, what we, we have two different numbers that we look at for write-offs. One is our mandatory write-offs. Those are the write-offs that we write off right away, Medicare and Medicaid, and then we look at bad debt after that.
Okay. On indigent support, poverty support?
We, in the second memo that I sent on Friday, I had reached out to the billing company, and we have not given out significant, or had requests for hardship discounts. In 2018, we had three requests for a total of 2,600, and 2017, we had two requests for a total of 2,400.
So, about 5,000?
Yep.
Anybody else?
I'm, you know, again, with levy limits and stuff, and if we're talking about increasing the village percentage per capita in three years, it'll be like two and a half times what we're paying now, like 2021.
Depending on what proposal?
What's that? At the, like, page eight with the, you know, per capita changes for A and B? It's got the city totals come out from, they go from $17 this year to 41, and.
Yep, and those are the different proposals, mhm.
Okay.
And then on that second memo that I sent out late, that attachment B did look at 50, and 50%, 50%, but those still had some.
Right.
Numbers for you.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's, staying with St. Croix EMS right now is, you know, it's, we're going to have all kinds of troubles trying to make our levy limits and stuff within two years. That's, that's just fact. So, you know, I'm, this is a number you've got to work with. I don't see how this is viable option for taxpayers.
Brenda, do you, do you foresee hardship requests increasing with?
I would. Yep. Once those bill, if, if you increase the, the rates 45 or 80%, yes. I would think that those requests would increase, and so then, that is money that we need to determine how we're going to collect that in some other means, because we know that we need it to run the service with the two ambulances 24/7.
So, but there's a difference between the hardship and bad debt, right? I mean, we're, hardship is, we're just, we're not going to try to reimburse that, I don't think.
Correct. Well, but we still have to, we still have to pay our expenses, though.
Right. And that goes to the, to our bottom line?
Correct. And bad debt really, you know, the mandatory, they all go to our bottom line.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to ask John and Lakeview a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Sure. You know, like I said, I'd also ask them if they would give us a quick rundown for everybody that wasn't able to get out to the facility about what they, what they, you know, had shown us, so.
Do you want to do a rundown first?
Yeah, you, do you guys want to see the?
Yeah, why don't we do that first?
Can I have Matt do that? He does such a good job.
I was out there on.
I know. On Monday. I'll be there Tuesday. It's just the three of us.
Do you guys have your AV guy here, though? Assuming it's just HDMI?
Yeah, he's in there, I think.
Nate's.
God, Bill.
Yeah, that's on Nate.
Hi again. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Matt Milder. I'm an operations supervisor for Lakeview. This was just a brief presentation that we did for those that came over. Thank you for those that came over, but we just wanted to recap a few, hit a few highlights, if you will. The topics that we covered on the two days that we did have council members with us, we just did a recap of our operations. We talked about dispatch. That was something that we wanted to make sure that we dove into a little more in-depth with some more detail. We talked about some of the partnerships that we've had with, within public safety and the communities that we're working now, and then a brief overview of what we kind of thought this could look like, and then finally, a tour of our campus. I know that you guys are very well aware of our deployment, but we did talk about those ambulance locations again. The two in Hudson current, or, pardon me, two in Stillwater currently, one at Hudson Hospital, and then the one in North St. Paul. We also talked about our team. What you see up there is a current makeup of our team. We're 39 paramedics. 23 of those are critical care, and then, within that 39, we have 10 part-time casual that, that kind of support our, our daily deployment. We gave a, just a brief overview of our bid process. We bid on seniority. Our paramedics have a great schedule that. Our paramedics have a great schedule that they work, offers them a lot of flexibility, they essentially design their own schedule, which is great for a satisfaction point for us. We recapped our two thousand eighteen numbers, two thousand eighteen ended up with just over seven thousand requests for service. We provided mutual aid to our surrounding communities five hundred and twenty-five times. We requested mutual aid one hundred and thirty times and did standby for police and fire incidents right at a hundred times. Our two thousand eighteen average response time for emergency nine-one-one calls was six minutes and forty-four seconds. We talked about this, uh, this number, I would say fairly in-depth, uh, the, the two dates that we had. For Lakeview, how this time is measured, again, from the time the call is received. We, through our CAD system, will punch a number through once the truck is in, or once the paramedics are in the truck moving. So that starts at en route time and then that time stops again when the crew arrives at the scene. So that total time is six minutes and forty-four seconds. We felt it was important to just highlight the fact that our data is driven by the Alina CAD system. That those, the times are measured and marked in that CAD system, uh, not times aired on the radio, anything like that. They are true punched through times when the truck is in motion and when the truck is arriving. We did a brief overview of our, our partners through Alina, our dispatch center. They have a very state-of-the-art dispatch center, we did highlight the fact that in two thousand fourteen, they were, became one of an accredited center of excellence. It's a tough one for me to get out. This is something that they are very proud of and the fact that only four percent of dispatch centers in the world have this accreditation. We talked a little bit about the screens that you see up there, the two, the portion on the top, or the, pardon me, the picture on the top left, a shot inside the dispatch center, the top right as well. And then the picture below, that is actually the, the CAD system that is in our ambulances. Pretty tough to see there, but the buttons across the top with different color coordination are when the crews, that's them punching en route, arriving on scene, transporting to a hospital, arriving at that hospital and then clearing back to their bases. The other piece that we highlighted was a, it's called the pulse system, which I'm gonna pull it up for you right now. It's a, it's a system that Alina started using for vehicle tracking. And, um, if I can figure out how to share my screen with you, I will show you. There you go. So what this system does, what you're looking at now is a live shot of all of our vehicles. The different color coordination is broken down to what the status of the truck is, depending on where they're at. And that color coordination goes right along with the dispatch buttons that you saw that sit in the truck. So whether a truck is moving to post, moving back to a base, at a base, en route to a hospital, en route to a scene, all determines that color coordination.
I got a question, do you mind if I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
The line, the purple line in the upper right, is that just the destination?
Destination, yep.
Got it, okay.
So if we had an accident, an active incident up here, um, I could click on that and just show you, uh, the information that the, the crew would be getting, but I'll show you a vehicle right now. So this information shows the crew that's on that truck, um, their destination, so that truck is the, the truck number eight oh three. They're headed to our base in Stillwater, shows us how fast they're going and what type of unit they are, which for us, really the only time that you would see a difference is, uh, with my vehicle, our supervisor vehicles show up differently than, uh, the ambulances, so the dispatchers can differentiate. So how this system works or is integrated into Alina's system is when a call comes up, you would see, uh, the address would auto-populate on the map. And they can use this to determine which truck is truly, truly the closest by distance and time. So, uh, this software integrates with, uh, it's called, it's a Waze app. It has road conditions and, uh, and traffic levels. So if a dispatcher sees that there is maybe gridlock on thirty-six, it'll show up as a red block there. They know they can then at least consider sending a different truck to that location, uh, again with the goal of time and distance, getting the truck there as quick as we can. Anything else, I, I don't wanna spend too much time diving into this, but anything else?
Is this a Alina's system or?
This is Alina's system, yep. Yep. So between Google Maps and Waze are the two key, uh, apps that they're using here, but, um, this is fully integrated into their dispatching side now.
Bless you.
Any other questions I can answer on that?
Got a question, well, I don't know if it's right for now, but, um, I'm just wondering, since you've been covering town of Hudson, how has the dispatch been going with St. Croix County?
It's, I, it's going well. We're working with Steve Takash to figure out if there's things that we can iron out to improve, uh, absolutely, but I would say, yes, it's going well.
So you're using this CAD system currently for the town of Hudson, just to see who should be dispatched?
This CAD system is in Alina, so.
Right.
Yes, when those, the calls in the town of Hudson, Hudson, pardon me, come into Alina, yes, this software would be used for that.
So what is the process now for, um, all right, if a call comes in from the town of Hudson, what happens? It goes to St. Croix County, how does it get transferred to Alina and to Lakeview EMS?
Sure, so same as within any of the other counties that we work in, the call initially comes into a primary PSAP. Comes into that primary point, they determine what the nature of the call is, what resources are needed, and then a call is placed to Alina. Same as we do in Washington County and Ramsey County, the information. Oh. There you go. So this is what, uh, the dispatcher would be looking at. They give latitude and longitude, the incident address, what the nature of the call is. This call has just been now prioritized to a routine call, so it's downgraded to a non, uh, non-emergent response, no lights and sirens. So, yeah.
Could you walk me through sort of this, a scenario, cause I'm always thinking of, you know, we had a call nine-one-one.
Sure.
A few years ago, right? And I'm sitting there talking to dispatcher while all, all this other background stuff is happening. So the end user, is he on the line with, with St. Croix County dispatch?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're just kinda piggybacking through Alina that you're?
St. Croix County has elected to do the pre-arrival, so they're gonna be the ones that are giving CPR instructions, bleeding control instructions, all of that stuff.
Sure.
Uh, prior to us getting there. The information that's given to Alina is basic nature of the call, what we're responding to, obviously an address and then any information that's available right at that time of the call. Other updates that, than what we would get from St. Croix County would be aired over the radio as we're responding to the call.
Gotcha.
Yep.
I'm gonna take exception to the thought that the Hudson dispatch system is really going well with St. Croix County.
Okay.
Cause I, I had a conversation with him, I asked him specifically about that, because I, when it was brought up at our first meeting, I questioned, significantly questioned the logistics of that system, of the way that process was going to work. And I, I think at that meeting, go back to look at the video, I said, I don't think, I don't think you're going to have a nine-one-one ambulance here on site all the time, hundred percent like St. Croix EMS does now. And I think it's, that's, there are some instances where that's been shown to be the case. The, one of the things that I would be looking for would be information from St. Croix County. If, you know, the line information is good, but St. Croix County is really who we're connected with in terms of, um, nine-one-one emergencies and dispatch. So right now, and this was an issue two years ago, however long it's been, that there was inadequate communication from, Lakeview EMS relative to when that an ambulance was on the way and that a, when an ambulance arrived there, which to me are kinda the critical, critical pieces. The dispatcher wants to know that there's someone on the way.
Yep.
And he wants to know when someone's there on the scene, so he can kinda let go of that call.
Yep.
Totally, and that is, you're, that's less than fifty percent right now in the month of January, it was less than fifty percent in terms of.
Which, which person is less than fifty percent?
Uh, fit, less, uh, there were eighteen dispatches to Hudson Township, seven of them arrived, it was reported. There were, the same eighteen, uh, let me see where my number is, I think four of them actually said there was an ambulance on the way. So we got a guy sitting out here, a person sitting out here, dispatcher, trying to, he's in, he's in communication with the patient or with the patient's representative, not knowing what's going on. And I know there's been some meetings, I talked to Steve Takash, Takash about this and I've, he and I have had an ongoing conversation. Cause this is, to me, this is something that has to be fixed. And there have been at least two meetings since the RFP presentation and neither one of them has come up with the solution. So that's, that's my information from Steve, that we do not have a solution to this issue of communication and that, and that your, the, your ambulance people are still not reporting in as we need them to report in. And I, I know we heard two years ago, we'll take care of that. And that's, that's not changing. So I, I don't, you know, there's a big gap here and I think the communication, that's critical, cause we're tying up our dispatch people here, waiting for something to, to, some knowledge to know what's going on. The extra time in communication, having to contact Alina can be anywhere from thirty seconds to a couple of minutes. So that's, you know, it's not a, it's not a real smooth system and no matter what we'd like to think, it's, it, it is not, there are, and time is critical.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's, uh, it, it works, but is it as good as it could be? No, absolutely not.
So two pieces, I guess, that I guess to address, um, I, I'm hearing two different concerns that you have. One is the, uh, the information about what vehicle was responding, that was a request that St. Croix County had. This is something that, we've shared that application that I was just showing you, we've shared that application with St. Croix County to use at their discretion. So they truly do know exactly what truck is coming, they know who's on that truck and they know exactly where they're responding from.
So they have to, are using a different screen then to find that out or how do they know that? I've been out there, they have, they have a number of screens that they're, you know, five or six screens, just like the Alina setup.
Yep.
Not necessarily the same, but they have a large number of screens that they're viewing for.
It's a, it's a web-based app, so however they would choose to, to view it, but yes, most likely on a computer screen. The other piece of that was that we initiated a workflow change that St. Croix County had asked us to have our trucks check in on the radio, which that was a workflow change for us. Yes, we're working through that, um, and I would say, and I would think that Steve would agree with me or Terry, that that process has improved dramatically. That the crews are talking on the radio, we're getting updates from St. Croix County and we're providing them with information on our arrival and transportation decisions.
The data doesn't look like it when you look at, and we only have a month to look at. It didn't get any better towards the end of the month than it was the first month, so.
Okay.
And, and that's eighteen incidences, it's not a large number, but failure, failure in over half of them is a large number.
Yeah, and like, like John just said, that, that was a workflow change for us. Us checking en route, arriving on scene and then the destination decision, we, we get our data and our information through the Alina system.
Yeah, but that's, that's a neat system.
Yeah, very, very neat system, uh, state-of-the-art system. To, to John's comment just now, he made the comment that we haven't initiated a formal process of how the crews are gonna check in. We had asked them to, if there's information, make sure that they're copying that information, getting that, the updates, acknowledging that with St. Croix County. But the actual process of what information we're gonna, is it just en route, is it arriving on scene, is it transporting to the hospital? What those true benchmarks are that St. Croix County is asking for, we haven't shared that information with, with our team. Did I answer both of your questions or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll buzz through the rest of this stuff. At our, the time that we took with those council members that did come over and see us, we really wanted to emphasize the relationships that we have with our public safety partners. Like you guys had noticed in the RFP, uh, the implementation of four of our paramedics to the Washington County SWAT team has been since two thousand fourteen, where we put the four paramedics on there, that's an outstanding program, a lot of success there. We also put those same four paramedics on the Washington County Mobile Field Force Team, which is a team that responds to civil unrest, again, a great program. We talked a lot about, uh, river response and our close partnership that we have with Stillwater Fire and the fire departments that, uh, we partner with to respond and provide the best care on the river. And then finally, we did talk about fire rehab, uh, working with fire departments on those fire scenes to ensure that they're safe. Uh, finally, we initiated a K nine care program with Stillwater Police and Washington County, it's actually all the K nine officers in the, in the county came out for a, a training that we put on with a vet from the University of Minnesota, something that we are proud of again with that partnership. And then finally, we just talked about, uh, our vision. There's many communities, we're not a new organization, there's many communities that we are deeply rooted in, partnering with these communities and having a great relationship. That's our goal. So.
Got a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you're talking about different communities, are you finding the community, communities that you're serving are, still have first responder programs?
Yeah, we see first responders in, uh, almost every community, they just come in varying shapes and forms. So fire-based, um, you know, if we look at like St. Joe Township, they're a independent first responder group, so we fire-based some of those independents and then also law enforcement as well, law enforcement first responders.
So, somebody following up?
No.
I was gonna say, just as an aside, any thoughts on, on River Falls doing away with their first responder unit?
I, I guess I don't have any information on that, I don't know. Oh.
I can speak to that, like, what was the question?
I just, it, it just, I mean, it has nothing to do with this necessarily, but I was just wondering what your thoughts were about River Falls joining.
Yeah, you know, I, I saw the data, not the data, I saw the, um, the article I think that was posted in the paper following their meeting that they had. And I think their, their decision to discontinue their first responder, um, program was based on their response times. So I think they had an average response time in their community of seven minutes and some odd seconds. And the, the belief there, again, I'm basing that on an article I read, uh, with that type of response time, our first responders are A, either just getting on scene or they're still responding to the scene. So it kinda defeats the, the first responders become more of an assistant to the, to the call than a true first responder. And, and, uh, I, I think that was their decision to do it. Is there more to that?
No, I was just curious what, what your thoughts might have been, that caught me by surprise when I read that.
Yeah. You know, it would be, um, it's similar to what we see in the city of Stillwater. Uh, Stillwater has a full-time fire department, full-time people get in the truck and our crews are a lot of times arriving at the same time together. They become an assistant to us in helping care for the patient. They're not really a true first responder, they're more of a part of our, our care team. I, I would, I would be lying to you if I stood up here and said, I, I think we don't need first responders on all things. When we have that support, we do provide a better care and when we have communities that are willing to do that, the patient ultimately is gonna get a far better care than the communities that don't have that available to them. And there's a lot of communities that do that. But we, as an organization, don't require first responders, but we are there to support the first responder groups that wanna be in place.
Probably, you may have heard me ask, Brenda, what, how, how much money the city has put into hardship?
Oh, yeah.
Do you guys have any numbers on that, what you've done?
As a matter of fact, Rich, I do have numbers. And again, thanks for coming over to see us last week.
And again, thanks for coming over to see us last week, Sarah Rich, Paul. And this question has come up a lot. What do you give for charity care? What is there for hardship and that type of thing? I didn't divide this out, um, year by year, but over the last two years, just in charity care alone, uh, we've given out a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. That's just for EMS. And as a nonprofit organization, that is publicly reported. There was also a number, uh, last time we gave the financial, um, kind of a question and answer sheet, the last presentation. And we talked about a fifty-eight percent reduction in charge for people to pay cash. And that number over, uh, two years was three hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that's just that fifty-eight percent discount that we talked about. I want to be clear. Different from charity care. That's not charity care. That's just discounted pricing. So.
Nathan, can I follow up, sorry?
Yeah.
So Nathan, if, um, so, can I ask you a few contractual questions? Is that all right?
What do you define as contractual?
Well.
We're not contracting or discussing a contract.
I know, I'm curious. So, so one, one thing I'm wondering is if, um, if we were to, to go with Lakeview, exactly what you're talking about, the fifty-eight percent discount, uh, my understanding is that's for people who don't have insurance, right, who, who need a break?
Yeah.
So could that language be put into a contract? So that would be like over the ten-year period that would be built into that?
So specifically line itemed into a contract?
Yeah, so I'm saying, when, if the city of Hudson, if we, if we were to contract with you, could, would that be, could that be put into the contract in terms of language that?
Same program?
Yeah, that we want to keep that fifty-eight percent over the course of the ten years.
Well, well, that applies to our entire hospital. That's not just an EMS thing, so I don't think we'd need to put it in a contract specific for EMS services. That, that's a policy that we use across the board at the hospital. So.
So would you be open to putting it, as long as it's standard policy, would it be okay putting it into a contract?
Well, if, if Kathy and our lawyers agree to that.
I'm just asking in general, because that's, that's a piece that I like, that I, that I would like to see. And then can we, can we say this open? All right. So, so the, the dynamic deployment, I think there's really, um, some strategic advantage to that. I've, I've, um, been learning about that. And I know that it's got of different names or different, it can trigger different feelings in different people. Um, my question is just, um, if I'm understanding the numbers right, basically on the Minnesota side, the calls that you guys would service would be about seven thousand calls in twenty eighteen.
Yep.
And on our side of the river, we have an estimate of one thousand, one hundred and forty-two billable calls. But I know there's more that we would do that aren't billable, so I'm guessing that's under two thousand, probably total. So if there were the two at Stillwater, the two at Hudson Hospital, the one in North St. Paul, with the dynamic deployment, can you give me a sense of big picture? Like, if there's, you know, seven thousand calls on the one side of the river and two thousand on the other side of the river, would there be a tendency to, to want to pull, to need to pull from Hudson, just in terms of the numbers, number of calls?
I'm gonna let John talk about the deployment of the ambulances. You certainly don't want me deciding that for you tonight.
Sure, no, thanks.
When we look at our deployment, essentially what we look at is the resources go where the calls are at that given time.
Right.
So to base it off of a volume in Minnesota versus a volume in Wisconsin, we don't really, we don't treat our deployment like that. We treat our deployment in the sense of we go where the emergency is. So when we look at that picture of those five resources, those five ambulances, if the need is five resources in the city Hudson, and we have availability, we use five resources in the city Hudson. We don't break it out to a percentage of going here or there. Um, if that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking at, trying to look at the overall numbers and get a sense of where they would be. And then.
Higher population obviously have higher volume, so.
Yeah.
We see that in any, any community that we cover now.
Okay. Thanks. And then the RFP calls for, um, two ambulances to be at Hudson Hospital?
Yes.
And then one would, uh, be, be doing the transfers on and off, right, to, to?
As needed, yep.
As needed, right, right.
Yep.
So then, am I right, if, if, uh, say a transfer goes to the Twin Cities, and then, um, another ambulance gets called to, say, town of Hudson, for example, they need servicing? So then, is the idea that one would pull down from Stillwater to, to cover Hudson, then during that period when we don't really have an ambulance, like, right at the hospital, so to speak?
So we would backfill those resources, yep.
Okay. And I imagine, and that's hard to predict, obviously, that's just the, the real life flow of things. This next question, uh, I don't mean it to be embarrassing at all. I don't mean it to be negative at all. I'm just very, I'm trying to do my due de, due diligence, if I can say the word here. So Lakeview, I, I'm aware that Lakeview had a contract with, um, Scandia and Marine on the St. Croix. And if I'm not mistaken, um, that didn't work out, um, over the period of that contract. Can you just talk a little bit about maybe what happened with that? And, and I guess here's my, I don't want to revisit all the things, but my big picture is, how can, can you give some sort of a, a confidence, uh, or not, not guarantee, but how confident would you be that Hudson, you know, the, the economics or the situation is different than, than, than what happened with, uh, Scandia and Marine on St. Croix?
I, I'm sorry, Matt, Matt wasn't in his role when that happened, and neither was Nate with our company. That was me, so. The, it's, it's completely different than, than anything that we've done in our operation in the thirty years that I've been there. And it's important for people to realize the, the process that took place for that to happen. So Marine on the St. Croix, similar to, to St. Croix EMS, had their own ambulance service. Had it for many, many years. It was based out of the fire station. The city of Marine approached us, uh, now, uh, we did, we had a two-tiered response with, with Marine ambulance. So any ALS calls, Lakeview got automatically dispatched. When Marine ambulance got dispatched, Lakeview got dispatched, but so did North. North came in from the north end, covered primarily, primarily the Scandia area.
North Memorial.
North Memorial, I'm sorry. So Marine, the city of Marine approached us and said, we're, we, we can't continue to staff this. It was completely a volunteer, uh, operation. We can't staff this anymore. Would Lakeview consider taking over our entire service area? So the difference in Minnesota versus Wisconsin, the ambulance service areas are set by the state. It's called a primary service area. It's, it's very complicated. It's, it's, uh, it's almost a act of God to get anything changed in Minnesota on those primary service areas. And it is a state decision on how you do that. So we, uh, this was uncharted territory for us to deal with, so we immediately contacted the state and asked what the process was. And we were told Marine has to make the official request that they're going to get out of business, and they want to transfer their ambulance license to Lakeview. So, uh, that process started, we had less than thirty days to, to put a plan in place to do this. Uh, we did it. We successfully did it. Our crews, uh, worked a lot of overtime until we could get, uh, the eight people hired full-time that we needed to cover a twenty-four hour operation, uh, up in that area. The problem that we had, uh, after we started our hiring process, is the Attorney General in Minnesota at the time weighed in on that, uh, decision. And based on the, the laws of Minnesota, that license in Marine was a BLS license, which meant that we can't operate in Marine as an ALS ambulance service. Very strange, but, uh, that was the rule. So really, in the eleventh hour of this process, what we had to do was, we had to contract with the EMTs on Marine ambulance for about a week's time till we could get approval from the state, um, to change that license over to ALS. But the problem is, we didn't, so we, the truck had to physically be in Marine. So we couldn't respond from Stillwater because it was a separate licensed area. Marine Fire Department had no place. The city had no place to park the ambulance, but Scandia did. So we approached the city of Scandia, the fire chief and the mayor, and asked if they'd be willing to give us space in their station twenty-four hours a day for a crew to be there. Uh, basically, we're going to come and live in your station. After an hour meeting with the mayor and the fire chief, they handed us the keys and we moved an ambulance up there. I, I bring that up because it's, it, it's, it was a very unusual situation. That wasn't the plan. That wasn't the original plan, but because of the state licensing, we had to do that. So we never, uh, my hope was that that would be a, that would be a long-time, um, operation that we'd ha- have up there, but we never ever promised that it would be a long-term deal. And I think, uh, after the first year, we reevaluated what we were doing. We kind of put together a financial, um, a pro forma of the continued operation there. And it really wasn't feasible to keep it. We were doing a hundred calls a year, a hundred and thirty calls a year out of that operation. It's a long ways from Stillwater. It was sixteen point some miles from Stillwater. But the state did say, we didn't have to have an ambulance base there. By state law, we can be up to twenty minutes away, so we could respond from Stillwater. We don't want to do that, just like we wouldn't want to come here to Hudson and park an ambulance here, and then always be responding from somewhere else. So we approached North Memorial, um, and worked with, asked North Memorial if they'd be interested in splitting the service area. We give them what's appropriate in that northern part of the, uh, in that service area. And then we take whatever is appropriate for us to take. The two of us came together. We sat down with maps, with the fire chiefs from Marine and Scandia. And we drew up lines on there that, uh, made sense for everyone. Everyone was in agreement. We presented that to the state, and that was the process. So our final step in that was, uh, Ted Wegleitner and I, uh, went to the city council and announced that we were going to discontinue our service, uh, in Scandia. And the new operation was going to be, North Memorial would take the north half and Lakeview would take the south half. And we still continue to do that today, uh, with them. I, I think the general perception in the community, uh, not even in that community, but I think outside of the Scandia and Marine community that didn't know the full dynamics of how that even happened, think it may be the way that you brought it up, so not offended by you bringing it up that way. And, and again, we, we did offer, um, Ted and I met with the city, with the mayor, and said, if you guys want to, want to help support it, we, you know, for two years, they've had a full-time ambulance in their community, and the people loved it, and the crews loved it, and, uh, it was a sad thing. But, you know, financially, you, you, you can't keep that operation going. And the, and the city couldn't afford to do it, so.
Right, and I guess when I, I want to try and get at this, uh, do you feel confident that Hudson is a different, you know, market, so to speak, that, that, the problems that were experienced? This is a, I mean, you feel confident that it would work if you were the one that was chosen here in Hudson?
It's, it's a completely different model than what we had in Scandia. Again, Scandia is a long ways away from, from our hospital. We do get a, a fair number of people from that area, but Hudson is core to our, uh, hospital. I mean, we, a lot of our, uh, patients come from this community. We, our people live in this community, so it is completely different. And we're eight miles away versus sixteen miles away in Scandia. We, there were some areas in Scandia that were twenty-five miles, uh, away from the hospital, so, it, it's different. And I, I, um, as we've gone through this process, we would have never got to the point we are today if we didn't think it was worth our, our, um, time and, and investment. It's a huge investment that we've, uh, entered into to do what we're doing right now.
And can you talk about the, um, can you talk about, so the two, uh, ambulances would be stationed at Hudson Hospital?
Yep.
You had showed me on Monday there, you have kind of a plan or a scheme. I don't know what, how, how, can you just talk about generally, what, what, what would that look like?
Yeah. Again, it's just a concept, but when we were, uh, negotiating with the city, uh, a year and a half or two years ago, we had to come up with a plan on what the future was going to look like, so we had plans, uh, developed for a base at the hospital. And we've just, we pulled those plans back out again, and, um, so the, the, the plan would be that we would have a, building at the hospital, on the hospital's property here in Hudson. And it would be two twenty-four hour trucks, two twenty-four hour ambulances, four paramedics. And at that point, we'd, we'd probably have to add supervisors into that as well.
And if I saw the plan correctly, there's, uh, I think there's four bays?
You were held to secrecy on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, just kidding.
But my point is, I think that, that you're thinking more long-term. Is that a fair assessment?
And, and again, that was a concept, and we, we, we built, or we did, we did the blueprints or asked them to do blueprints to, you know, what the maximum would look like for now, to do that, just to get some pricing on it. But that, that's where we're at today.
Could I ask a question on that, John?
Yeah.
Uh, of course, that's, that's one of the issues we're facing, we have to look at with St. Croix EMS, that we need a different facility for them. So, and the big issue there, of course, is money.
Right.
So who is paying for the expansion of the hospital?
Well, it would come out of my, it would, it comes out of my operating expenses, um, but the hospital is ultimately paying for that.
Is, can I jump in now that the presentation is done? Y'all done?
Yeah, good.
Waiting patient. John, this is an oper- this is an operational question. I'm taking my finance cap off and putting public safety on. And my concern is, I've seen the data from St. Croix EMS, and this is in regards to response.
Yep.
Response times. Your document one F and document, um, and there goes another one, document one E. I would be concerned if I was the town chair of Hudson, who's sitting here now. You're at an average of twelve forty-nine, and would you say Jim, eighteen calls have been out there?
Yeah.
And I, I do see some of them comparable to the, the response time of St. Croix EMS, but you've got a lot of large response times averaging. Out in Somerset Township, the Village, Hudson Town was twelve forty-nine.
Yeah, that's when you're looking at, where I broke it down. Each city is broken down into the response time. Yeah, 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 yep.
So, how do you alleviate my concern about my residents, uh, and their response times? Obviously, if you put two ambulants, two hours, three sixty-five, that's a difference.
Yeah.
What's happening? Why isn't it getting out to the township fast enough? A six-minute re- they say seven point twelve response time, you say six forty-five.
So I'm going to be, I'm going to be honest with you on, I, I don't care whose response time it is, but when that average response time is for all of our, um, five thousand and eight hundred and some calls, because the, that data's only for responding lights and sirens. The, uh, the further out you go in your service area, you're going to have, uh, areas that you can't, it's more than six miles away. We're not going to be able to make it there in that six-minute timeframe, so how do you get to a six-minute average? It's the same for every service. Our, our core, uh, our core of our call volumes are in a small area close to where our bases are. So that's how we get that, that call volume. In Somerset, you know, I, I, I couldn't tell the, the Village of Somerset that we're going to get here in six minutes, because they're too far away. So, does that help explain that a little bit?
Well, I understand there's, I don't know the circumstances of the eighteen calls for January to the township. Is that when you started service?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that's where that number came from? Twelve forty-nine average minutes?
Oh, no, no, no. Um, no, that's, uh, that's from the, from the hospital. That's two thousand and eighteen data. It's, that's the hospital, um.
Our hospital.
Yeah, it, it's technically in the city, but in our, the way it was entered into our system, it was showing up as the, uh, as the, uh.
Because if that's what you're saying, if, that would be disconcerting even more, if you're saying twelve minutes from our hospital out to the township?
Yeah, I, here, I, I can share this with you. I, I'm going to report this tomorrow at the, um, the Village Board Meeting tomorrow. So there's, there's twenty calls on this, um, on this report, but one's at the hospital, so it doesn't count. So there's really nineteen on here. Nineteen calls on here. We had, uh, our longest response time to that community was fifteen minutes. And our average is eight minutes and forty-two seconds.
What community? The Village?
The town of Hudson.
Town of Hudson.
Town of Hudson.
Is this more of an updated one? Is that what?
Just before I came here, I guess, I'm going to report tomorrow at the town of Hudson.
That's twenty nineteen.
So we've had nineteen, that's from January first till the thirty-first, in the town of Hudson. So we've had 19, that's from January 1st till the 31st, in the Town of Hudson.
So when you do a transfer, are you done, Randy, or should I?
Go ahead.
Okay. When you do a transfer, what happens then?
Okay.
How are you covering the Town of Hudson? From where are you covering the Town of Hudson?
Well, as soon as, as soon as the ambulance here in.
John, can he make copies? Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, there's no, no private data in there. It's just. So when the ambulance here gets assigned a call, when you saw the CAD screen there, as soon as it gets assigned a call, another truck from Stillwater gets assigned to come over here and cover. So, the minute they get, dispatch gives them that call. That's what the lines were that you saw, that trucks getting sent over here to cover for that.
So it's actually coming to the hospital and spending the time in the hos, at the hospital?
Or, or they could drive around town if they want, but they usually come right to the hospital. So, we, we have a policy in place in our dispatch center that if we're down to one truck, we can't do transfers. And that's always been in place. That's nothing new. We, you always, you're not going to do a transfer out of a hospital and leave your 911 system open. So, is that the concern maybe that you were bringing up?
Yeah, and having a, an ambulance on this side of the river when you're taking that transfer.
And we assign the ambulance the call before the, another truck is over here. But again, we're, I mean, I have, you know, we did 186 or 187 transfers out of the hospital last year. I know we can get to the hospital from our hospital, walking out the door and arriving over here in 11 minutes, or less. But if you averaged it out, it'd be about 11 minutes. So, I guess my point to that is, is if you get a transfer call, the three calls that you, that you'll see on this sheet, three of those calls, is exactly what happened. We had a back, back-to-back calls, and the truck was on the way over here covering and responded. I, I don't think that's any different than what happens today in, in anyone's operation. Those happen, and we were always open with you guys and honest that if we did this, we were going to use dynamic deployment, and that's what that means. There will be times where a truck is coming from your middle coverage point, but no different than if St. Croix EMS calls River Falls up here to, to meet halfway. You guys do that, correct? So, the, River Falls will move halfway up and cover for Hudson when they're busy. It's kind of the same thing.
Yeah, but it is, but you do, you, you only have two access points unless you go down to Prescott or up further north. That is a concern. I know that you have side, no different than anybody else can go on the side and get through with the accidents that could potentially, worst-case scenario.
Right, I mean, I.
You still should be able to get through.
We should. I mean, I, again, I've lived in these communities my whole life, so.
Getting through, getting through during an emergency with the two bridges, that may be, it's a worst-case scenario backup. They can get through on the side.
Ambulances will probably be at the accident.
Well, it's, it creates a different issue, but. Touching on something that Paul had said about your future plans. I had a meeting last week with an individual that you guys did, in fact, start the process of a $5 million buildup for the ambulance offsite behind the building on your property. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't, nothing, we haven't started anything.
But it is in the.
Yeah, it, the.
It's back on.
Are, the, the budget for the building, for the EMS quarters and garage has been approved for 2019 already.
Thank you.
But we haven't, it's preliminary. Is that right?
Maybe I shouldn't have said that, but. It's a good point to, to obviously have, to us to know about what the future is.
Right.
Up there with that.
Right. It's, again, it's, those are things that are beyond my pay grade, and I don't really have the authority to be up here talking about it, but there are plans.
I'd like to go back to first responders just for a second.
Yeah.
Looking at our community, knowing our community, would you suggest a first responder program would be ideal for the city of Hudson?
In, within the city limits?
Yeah.
I want to be careful how I answer that, because I don't want anyone to think that, I don't think first responders are needed or are valued. If, if the city is going to do that, again, like I said before, the patient's going to get the ultimate best care you can, because you've got that extra support on there. There are times that our first responders will drive the ambulance, and then both paramedics can be in the back providing care. Case in point, we had a cardiac arrest in the Town of Hudson. Six-minute response to the scene, work the patient for a number of minutes on the scene, get a pulse back, load the patient in the ambulance, and first responders drive our ambulance to regions while both medics are in the back with a very critical patient that arrested multiple times. That is very valuable. Can we do our business without the first responders? Yes. And, and we would have to. If there's no first responders, we're going to have to do it. And we don't always get first responders on every call we go to. But am I supportive of it? Absolutely, 100% supportive.
Would that extend to including being covered under your licensure?
Yeah, well, yeah. In Wisconsin, you have to, they have to be part of that, so, yes.
Going back to the Scandia piece, and not, and, you know, that, that being a BLS area versus an ALS. Is there any, I suppose you're doing Town of Hudson now. I'm just making sure that there's nothing licensure that you're missing or anything like that?
No.
Okay. So everything's up?
Right.
I had another question, but it'll come back to you.
Relative to licensing, I see one of the questions is about St. Croix EMS employees, paramedics particularly, coming to work for you. And one of the requirements was to have a Minnesota certification. Is that?
Yes.
Let me ask the question this way. Are the, are your employees required to have a Wisconsin certification now? Or would they be, given the expansion of the?
Yeah, so all of our, all of our employees at the day of hiring are required to have the license, licensings to operate. The one exception in our, in our HR process is we give them six months to get a Wisconsin license. The only reason we do that is because we, the state of Wisconsin can't seem to get a license out. Now, I will say in the last, in the last three years, maybe, that's improved greatly. But prior to that, it would be months. But technically, by law, they cannot function as they're a paramedic in the state without the license.
Okay.
And they have to be credentialed under you.
Is, is that difficult to, to become, if you're licensed in Minnesota or Wisconsin? Is it difficult to become licensed in the other state?
No, well, it's, it's difficult to, to file reciprocity in the state of Wisconsin, but to do the reverse in Minnesota, it's a piece of cake. So, there are just different rules on, on each side. But for our paramedics to file reciprocity over here, I think the last eight people we hired, three of them came already licensed in the state. The others, I think it took four to six weeks. But our training program, our FTE program is 10 to 12 weeks. So, at that time, they're riding as a third paramedic. So, they just can't do primary care, they can't provide primary care in either state if they're not licensed in that state. So they have to be licensed in the state. And if for some reason they don't get that license in six months, they're, they're off the schedule. Or, again, it's, their hiring is contingent on their licensing.
Right, right. I got that. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't an onerous issue. And that it wasn't, it had, obviously, with you doing, if you're doing now 2,000 calls in Minnesota or in Wisconsin.
Right.
You have to have.
Yeah.
A number of your people licensed.
Yeah, so all of our people are licensed in the state of Wisconsin and Minnesota, and we require a national registry. And I think St. Croix EMS.
You require a national registry too?
Yeah. So sometimes that's the piece where we'll get, people, not everyone needs to keep that national registry certification. We've always maintained that and required that our employees get it and maintain it. But some places, their employer doesn't require it, and they let it go. You know, it's $20 a year to, or every two years to keep it. And you work hard to get that. I'd never let it go. People let that go, and that is, that's a requirement, so we can't, we can't hire people that don't have that. They can go, they can go challenge the test if they want to do their test over. Not everyone wants to do that.
Thanks. That's, that's, I'm, that's good. I'm glad to hear you're handling it that way. I had a question on the, on transfers that came up in our listing as aid calls. You know, it was a way, which it really, and, and my first question was, who requested? There, there were 180-some calls, 2017, 2018.
Oh, yeah.
That, first of all, they listed it as being in Hudson Township.
I, that's a, that's just a glitch in our system. It's a, it's an auto.
One time it probably was.
When they do, they're correct, before it was annexed. Well, no, probably not. But when we do the report, we have a canned report, so it, I could have gone in there and changed it, but I wasn't going to change 180.
Figured it out pretty quick, you know, it wasn't a big deal, but.
Right.
But the, one of the points I made is, as we've been going over this for the last two, two and a half years, is I've heard several times that people would state that Lakeview was not getting transfers from Hudson Hospital, and there was rocks being thrown that St. Croix EMS was preventing this from happening. And I see the records, it says, you got almost half the calls. So, what happened? You know, I said, who, where'd that rumor come from that?
Well, I think all owing up to one of them, I think I, when I met with you a year ago, or whenever it was, I, I did say that there's times that other providers are coming to Hudson Hospital and doing the transfer. Why wouldn't we be the one getting called for it? Because we're not turning it down. I'm not speaking on every single call that someone else did. We might have turned it down, but we track that, and I, and I wasn't getting called. So that was the only, that was my question.
I, I remember that there's been a number of different kinds of inferences, but half the calls is, wow, that's, that was, that was really surprising to me that I'd been hearing something that really painted a different picture.
Yeah.
So, I'm disappointed, but I'm.
The other thing I want to add to that too, Jim, is on the, the transfer piece of it, a lot of the other, other EMS agencies that would come there and do the transfers, they're, they're pulling resources from their community to do the transfer that, you know, they might not have the res, they don't have the resources that we have, or the depth, you know, that we have during almost any given time. So that was really the question, is how, how come they're reaching out to, you know, a service that's over 20 miles away when we're only eight miles away? That, that was really the, the question. It wasn't the numbers, but it was just, we hear the other service getting dispatched there, and we don't.
Procedural issues.
And to me, that was, that was just, that was my question.
Okay. So then the, the last part of that was, who on those 187 calls, is that, where does that request come from? Is that coming from St. Croix EMS? Or is it coming from, directly from Hudson Hospital?
It, what I've been told, it would, those requests were coming from the hospital. So, they, the hospital would call the medic, call the St. Croix EMS medic that was on duty, tell them they had to transfer, and they would either say, okay, we'll be there. And then I guess they let St. Croix County know. And if they can't do it, then they would, they would tell them that they can't do it. And I think it was up to the hospital to make the decision who they call. So, and I can't tell you who makes that decision, if it's the, if it's the Huck sitting there, if the nurse is doing it. I, I don't know who is doing that. And I guess we, we never asked, we never went up there and asked how that was happening, so I don't know.
I know there, there's been some discussion, and they, they now have, or at least they, for a while, they had a procedure about how that was supposed to happen.
There was a procedure put together that I had no, I had no part of. It sounded like it was the medical directors and the ER came up with a procedure, and I think that was a year and a half ago, maybe, that, that, that they said they were following. So it was a flow chart, you know, if St. Croix EMS isn't available, you should be calling Lakeview next. If they're not available, then you just keep going down the calling tree. So, I, I think that's the way they were doing it. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody else? One last question on the advisory board. I remembered what my question was.
Yeah.
With the advisory board, would there be the possibility to review CAD? Kind of like what we were shown today?
Yeah.
Okay, because I saw that it was about, that we're able to review all that, but I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah. Again, we're, we can pull pretty much any data you want. We can get it from our CAD, you know, we can pull it off our own system. We can compare, if you want to compare, if you want to pull the 911 data and compare it to our data. Very open to that. That's, that's what we've offered to the Town of Hudson when we worked with them and in the beginning, so.
How often would you see something like that?
Well, so with, when we were talking the Town of Hudson, again, smaller, smaller volume numbers, we thought quarterly, but we left it up to them. Like I said earlier, I'm going to go to the town board meeting tomorrow and present our first month's data to them. Again, we'll show them the calls. It took us longer than 10 minutes to get there, and we'll, they'll see them all. So, I mean, we're going to, we're not, we, there's no reason to hide anything. Everything's discoverable, and it would be foolish to hide it. So, you know, with larger volumes, maybe you need to meet on a more frequent basis. But I think in our original proposal with the city, I think we were, I don't, I guess I don't remember, but we're open to that. Every month is fine, quarterly is fine. I think quarterly gives you more time, more data to look at.
Thank you.
John, I want to go back, revisit dispatch a little bit with St. Croix County. So, understand exactly what you're talking about, Jim. In fact, Friday, after our conference, it might have been Thursday, but after, after we were out at the, at the facility and with a walk-through, I got in touch with Steve Takash myself. And while he said that there were some struggles right now, I, there were two, two prongs to this. Number one, he said he couldn't be here tonight, but I asked him, in his stead, if it would be, if he, if, if it would be agreeable and correct that I were to say, on his behalf, that, that he believes that everything would be able to be worked out satisfactorily with Lakeview, and he said there'd probably be compromises on both sides, but he didn't see it as a problem. So that's with the current system using the telephone. But I want to go a little bit farther than that. We had some conversation. I want to make sure I heard this right. So, is there a way that you can integrate, that Alina can integrate, not you, Alina, the dispatch center with St. Croix County Dispatch, so that they're on the same radio? And we can, and we can bypass the whole telephone thing?
And it, I am, I, I know nothing about the, the intricates of the dispatch, of the radio system and the 911 system, and how that, how data is pushed. But in our conversations, and, and we've had multiple conversations with Steve Takash and Terry Anderson, including our Alina partners, and I think, and I'll explain that a little bit. But the, when I was talking to Alina last week, I, I said, I gave them an update on our meeting with Steve Takash and Terry, and I said, you know, right now, it's going to be business as usual. We're going to make some changes on our end, where our crews are going to go and, go en route, put themselves en route with the county. And two things that they want at minimum. Ambulance that goes en route, puts themselves en route, so we know who that is. I get it. It makes sense to me. And then when you clear the scene, call us and tell us you're clear of the scene. And I get that as well. They have some specific reasons why they want those two things. Not a problem, we're going to do that. And what I said to Matt, the memo is still on my computer. And what I said to Matt, the, the memo is still on my computer, I haven't finished it, to get that out to our staff. So, right now that's not happening, and I told them it, it's not gonna happen till they get the memo from me to know that they need to be doing that. But it will happen this week. Um, so when I was telling Alina, I was giving them the update on that, I said, and what we're gonna do is, we're gonna look for other options to, um, alleviate St. Croix County from having to call on the phone. That's, they don't wanna be calling our dispatch on the phone. Um, and Alina, uh, one of the supervisors at Alina said to me, oh, that's available, the technology's out there. And I said, oh, I didn't know that, Terry Anderson said their, their, um, equipment is so outdated, it, you wouldn't be able to do it. So, they were looking in two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two to upgrade their system, that's what Terry said, back when they upgraded the system, then maybe they'll be able to push the data. Um, so Vicki at Alina was telling me, no, that's available today. And I said, oh, it is, even for their system? She knows their system, and she said, oh, yeah, absolutely. So, I asked what the pri- does she know a price on that? And she said, yeah, it's probably a hundred thousand, so. Uh, again, not, that's a little bit steep, but, but the technology's there, I guess that's the point, the technology's there. You know, I, the, the, the thing that I wanna make clear is, there is not an issue right now with the way we get dispatched, the way we communicate with St. Croix County. Um, you know, we do seven hundred and some calls a year in St. Croix County. We've been a provider over here for thirty-four years, as long as the hospital has owned the ambulance service, and we've never had an issue. And there's never been a complaint, and I, Steve said that at our last meeting we met with, but they would like it different. They would like for us to do it the way everyone else in the county does it. And I understand that, but coming from my point of view, I need this technology. I pay for this technology, and for our operation to, to function is, uh, as well as we do, we need to keep using that technology. So, all I ask for is you to call us. Give us that initial call, that's all I need, cause it, once I'm in the system, that, we will do everything else on the county channel. We'll, we'll talk to our dispatch too, but just give us the call, cause that time stamps it, that gets the, everything into the system that I need to continue to run a good operation. So, are we to where they wanna be? No, not yet, but we're willing to get there. And, and I think we've had great conversations, um, our voices have got raised a few times, but we all shake hands at the end and smile, and let's look for something else to make this work, so, we're, we're trying. But I, I just, I, I think you guys need to know how important that is for us to do, and it's not unusual. The places throughout the United States call on the phone. Alina receives three hundred, three hundred thousand calls a year into their dispatch center, everything comes in on the phone. Um, Hennepin County, Ramsey County, Anoka County, the three largest counties in the state of Minnesota, all their medical calls go in by the phone. So, it's done all over the country, so we're not asking them to do anything that's out of the ordinary, that's just the way it, it works, so. But again, we're, we're gonna work through that and, but, but you guys don't, if, if, if you wanted to go with Lakeview, you would want us to have the best technology and, and know that our operation is running as effi- efficiency as it, as efficient as it can. So, that's, that's why we wanna, we gotta keep that piece of it. A year from now, it could be different, I don't, you know.
On another tech, uh, and I can't remember in all the stuff we've seen, we, you have a proposal about how our, our paramedics could conceivably come to work for, for Lakeview, and would even be desirable to, at least to start the operation. Uh, how about the EMTs, what, is there any, I don't know what are there, maybe twenty EMTs or so, twenty-five? That significant tribute, is, what's the possibility for them of being any value to, to your operation? But it's gonna be different, you run a different operation.
Yeah, I, we do run a different operation, and you remember, the proposal that we had a couple of years ago included some of the, the EMTs on there. You know, when we, when we originally started, uh, working with the city on that original proposal, um, we had asked the question, how many of the current EMTs wanna work full-time? And I, the answer was maybe three or four of them. A lot of them have other jobs, and they do this to give back to their community. Um, but they have other good jobs that pay better than what the EMT wages pay, so they, they didn't want any part of that. Um, that's what we were told, so, you know, you remember the first week I was here presenting, uh, we didn't have that included, and then Ted Wegleitner asked me after the meeting, why can't we do something for some of those EMTs that were working all them hours? So, that's when that, you know, we went back to the drawing board and drew something up, so. I, again, I'm not saying that that's what we're talking about now, but we did have that on the table before. Do you have any, do you wanna add anything?
Sure. Anybody else right now? Paul's requesting a five-minute break. So, are we good with that? See you back here in five minutes, John, thank you. So, we'll get back to it, uh, any other questions? Things going on, Josh, obviously you've been in the back for a while, is there anything, I don't have a question, but is there anything that you wanted to say?
Well, there's lots I'd like to say, whether I wanna say it or not, it's a different story. But, in my proposals, my proposals, I'm pretty sure did not call for per capita payments.
I'm sorry, what?
Our, my proposals, A and B, were no, there were no per capita payments in there, I believe, if I remember reading it correctly.
Uh, I thought, uh, forty-five percent, there were per capitals in there.
I think just for the city, though, not for municipalities.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, okay, so you're, you're addressing Stan's comment.
Stan's comment, and Brenda's numbers that she put together that have per cap, you know, the per capita amounts in there.
Is that, Brenda, is that right? And?
Yes, uh, what I did is I looked at a forty-five percent increase and an eighty percent increase, um, but we could not, by raising the rates by that amount, we still needed the per capita payments, because remember.
For the other communities?
For somebody, somebody, we could not, just by increasing the rates forty-five and eighty percent, was not gonna generate enough revenue to have two ambulances twenty-four seven in the city of Hudson. And so, I have per capita payments in the proposal numbers that I gave you.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, does, Josh, does that answer your question, or do you understand that?
It, it doesn't answer mine, and why, why would you get different numbers than their?
Because remember the original proposal, um, Alder Person Weber was, um, with a run volume of thirteen hundred calls, thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred and seventeen runs, and so we have less runs. These proposals appear to have transfers in it.
Do we know that? I'm not satisfied it appeared to, I know, I want facts, they did or they didn't, so I don't like any assumptions.
Well, the assumptions that I made were to do a forty-five and eighty percent increase in rates with the run volume that we know that we have today, which is without transfers and without the town of Hudson. I can't put a run volume in my projections that we don't have happening here in our service area.
I think I, at the last meeting, one of the suggestions is one of the, and I wasn't the only one that did it, but I said, we need to validate these numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't consider, if you didn't reach out and talk to the, the person who we paid to help generate those numbers, if you didn't reach out and talk to them, then this is.
We did send some emails back and forth on that, and I felt more comfortable with EMS medical billing, um, and their projections of the numbers.
Not the projection.
So, I can reach out to them and verify those numbers, mm-hmm.
What, what you just said is you made an assumption about, that they had the, they had transfers in there.
Well, I.
And I don't think that's, that's appropriate, we need to not make that assumption.
Well, can I review it? Uh, proposal A, um, it has two hundred runs, uh, for BLS non-emergency. It has a hundred runs BLS emergency, it has four hundred runs advanced life support non-emergency, it has a hundred and forty ALS runs emergency, fifteen runs ALS two non-emergency, advanced life support two emergency, ten, and then there's specialty care transport of a hundred, two hundred of BLS non-transport, seven of advanced life support, one non-transport. And so, if you add that, it's three hundred, thirteen hundred runs.
Okay, and this is coming, I don't have that report in front of me, that's, this is one that was presented.
Yeah, that's from their proposal.
So, are you saying that some of those are transports?
They have to be, because we know, um, that we only have the potential of one thousand one hundred and forty-two transports or billable calls with the service, with the, with us and the partners that are here.
All right, so, Josh, the, um, just one second, Brenda, I mean, I, I'd like you both there, cause it's gonna, both of you are gonna have to answer this, I guess. So, I, I apologize, and I've got your proposal here, but I have, I didn't go through it looking for that. I thought, for some reason, I thought the forty-five percent was going back to a fifty-fifty, uh, formula for the, uh, for North Hudson and for Troy, but it wasn't, it was, we were taking them out completely.
Pretty sure that was option C, was the fifty-fifty.
With New Richmond?
With New Richmond.
Oh, okay, so I got that confused. Um, so, we were gonna offer up service to, under your proposal B, with forty-five percent, we're offering up service to North Hudson and Detroit on our dime? The city's, the city's money?
I'm pretty sure that's the way it's written in there.
That's the way it's written in there, okay, so.
I, I believe, I'm pretty sure, but the problem is, is that there was no per capita in there. And then, you know, Brenda sent out her report on.
Well, I know there was per capita for the city of Hudson.
Later on Friday, but that also includes, you know, huge per capita for Troy and for North Hudson.
Right, so, all right, so let's, let's play that one out. If we take the per capita out for Troy and for the, uh, for, for North Hudson, what does that do for the city?
I don't know, I, like, uh, back after our last meeting, I asked, again, to accom- to encompass, obviously, the company that helped write the RFP for me, and to bring them in and get them involved in this. I sent an email to Brenda requesting the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen financials again, so we could go over everything and to make sure it was okay. I was denied the request to have the RFP company that I had helped me write the RFP, I was di- denied the request to have them help me in relooking at the financials again. I also requested to have a member from the billing company here today, to answer any questions around billing, and I was denied that request as well.
By?
That request had to be come from you, by Brendan and by Devin. So, I'm, 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 I stand up here at this podium, as the head of a service, my hands are tied, I can't answer your questions, can't answer Randy's financial questions, I'm not given the information to answer your questions. So, I feel like I'm kinda getting railroaded up here a little bit.
So, you were, well, I don't know about railroad, we're just asking questions right now, but.
Right, but it's questions that I have nothing to look at. I have nothing to, I don't have a financial background, I can't sit down and, you know, figure out the profit and loss and all that stuff. That's what we rely on Brenda for. But I get, showing a thing, and all of a sudden I notice that there's per capita stuff in there. Well, yeah, it paints a really bad picture, cause we go right back to where we were, back when Brandon made his statement, back at the end of seventeen, beginning of eighteen.
Well, okay, so, um, I mean, to Brenda's point, if we're running out of money, in either scenario, we have to pick it up somehow.
Right, then obviously, we need to sit down and take a look at it, and as a city, come together and figure out how to fix it.
Okay. Brenda? Hang on, Josh, I'm sure other people got questions for you too.
Can I, yep, um, Devin and I spoke, and we were not comfortable with paying more money on the, to the proposal company to run numbers that we could get from the billing company.
There was no charge for them running more numbers.
And, that I don't know.
Well, all right, look, and I, I mean, if it costs more money, we just bring it to the council and ask the council, if the council's willing to spend more money, but Josh, if it doesn't cost any more money, who do you need approval from in order to go back and ask them for, to rerun numbers?
Cause that's what I was told when I requested the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen financials from Brenda. She asked me why I needed them, and I told them I was sending them to the company that had helped me write the RFP. And I was sitting right in Brenda and Devin's office when they said that wasn't necessary, that Brenda was doing all that work, and she doesn't feel the need that another company needs to do that.
Well, uh, obviously, with the presumption that it was gonna cost more money.
I told her right away that it wasn't, there was no cost for it.
Okay. All right, um, so, let's just, Brenda, let's review this then, based upon your numbers.
Yes.
Uh, in both scenarios, we run, we run out of the cushion that we have right now, which is what, eight hundred thousand?
Right, we're at eight hundred thousand at the end of two thousand and eighteen in cash in the fund.
Yep. And, so, within a couple of years, in either scenario, we're gonna be looking at the city having to pay more money.
Correct, in two thousand twenty-two, in any of the two scenarios, um, yes, we are.
So, if we were to, if, if in fact, and I guess this is the case, that the proposal B at forty-five percent did not run a per cap, did not have a per capita cost for our partners, then that would seem to me that any per capita increase is gonna be even a greater increase for the city residents, because you had it spread out among the other partners.
Correct, yep, correct.
So, um, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna be consistent with that proposal, we need to run new numbers. And, um, I don't, I don't know if there's an appetite here, what, what people's pres- presumptions were for the outcome today. If, if this was just informational, or if you, or something you wanted to do, but we can certainly take more time to get the numbers again. Um, Josh, uh, I would say, I think you would have the, the approval of everybody here to reach out to your, to your consultant, and, and, uh, and if they're offering up additional numbers without any cost.
And he should be provided the information he requested from his, from our administration, from Devin and Brenda, absolutely.
I do have a question, and Josh can answer this, how did they put a proposal together? Were you looking for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, did they not have that before?
Well, twenty-eighteen wasn't done before it is now.
He said twenty-seventeen as well, I'm just trying to understand.
They had it, but the biggest problem is, is obviously in the presentation of the RFPs, when, when, uh, Lakeview threw out there that they were taking the transfers, so, I mean, that changes everybody's proposal that was here. It changed Lake's region's proposal, it changed, I'm sure it changed North Memorial's proposal, so.
Uh, they, I don't think they included them.
Or.
They didn't include them, but.
But, but I remember, the last meeting, the direction was for Brenda to do the forty-five and the eighty percent, that's the direction you gave her. So that, you know, figure out those scenarios with the increases in billing, but.
Well, Lakeview is here to, to expand upon and explain their proposal. I think it's very reasonable for us to allow the company that wrote this proposal to stand behind it and explain, and modify based on new information.
That, that's all fine and good, but, you know, the only, you'll have to figure out, though, if there are num-, we'll have to figure out if there's discrepancies in the numbers, we'll have to resolve that, obviously. I'm not saying there will be, I'm not saying what that will be, but.
Right, but that means everyone needs to be able to have access to the information that you have.
If we can get, I mean.
As well as, you know, I mean, they need to have access, I, I would not, I, I just don't believe you should say, no, Josh. I, I would not, I just don't believe you should say, no, Josh, you can't have these financials. That's what I'm hearing happened.
No, they were to be forwarded to the, I was not under the understanding that this was going to be for free. That was not my understanding, if there was maybe this understanding here. We don't have the authority to authorize additional expenditures for this, if I'm incorrect.
So that was an assumption that you made, that it wasn't gonna be free. So I think, you know, what I'm hearing, we're making a lot of assumptions all over the place and I don't like it.
You know, and the other thing too is that I, and we certainly can do that, but you also, I mean, and I hope I don't get told for saying that, but it's sensing that you're not believing what Brenda's telling you.
I want to verify her numbers the same I wanna verify these.
That's fine.
So, but, but there was nothing, just wanna get this, make sure this is correct because I'm not sure what I heard you saying, Sarah, but there was nothing that Josh asked of you specifically that you didn't give him?
No, not to my understanding.
Okay.
He had requested.
Is that right, Josh?
I'm pretty sure I asked for twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen financials.
Okay. If he did, I apologize.
The conversation I remember was being forwarded to, but again, if we're wrong, we're wrong. We certainly can do that.
Well, I guess, I guess in an instance like this, just so that we make sure that everybody's covered, I think that this needs to be done with a paper trail, right? So from now on, any type of request that goes in should probably be done with an email so that we don't have a misunderstanding of what was asked for, what was not. All right, any other questions of, of Josh? Josh, is there anything just?
I, I just wanna say, I think in all fairness, I think maybe we should probably adjourn and, and get things to.
I, I agree. I think, I, I, I just, Josh, I wanna give Josh an opportunity to come up. Like we spent a lot of time up here and we had a lot of questions for them. And so if there's anything other than financials, anything that you wanted to talk about, any questions?
No, just, just got a question on page two of the RFP that you guys published for looking for bids from other, the actual packet. Anybody got that in front of them?
The thin one or the?
The thick one. Page, page two. Can somebody read that one for me?
Hopefully this is right. The city of Hudson will receive proposals to provide in part Oren Hall fully staffed critical care emergency ambulance service for the city of Hudson and surrounding municipalities that choose to contract for EMS services with the contractor selected through this RFP process. Proposals must be received by three thirty on Thursday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen. Late proposals will not be considered or returned, and then we'll give our address.
Okay. Well, I know St. Crey EMS is licensed in the state of Wisconsin as a critical care EMS provider. But I'm not sure that our competitor in this room is. I'm not, I'm not casting blame or, or trying to, you know, pull a rabbit out of the hole, but I just wanna make sure all the information's out there.
Say it again, you're saying they're not licensed critical care for the state of Wisconsin, Lakeview.
Not according to the state of Wisconsin.
John, I guess, is that true?
Yep.
Yeah, when the state of Wisconsin changed their rules, I don't know how far back that was. They, um, they were gonna force everyone that did any interfacility transfers to be, become critical care certified. So that's back when we sent all of our full-time staff to get critical care certification. That's required by the state of Wisconsin. During that process, when they went through, or prior to that process, you could do a interfacility transfer. You could become certified to do interfacility transfers. But there was a sunset date when that would go away. In the, in the meantime of that sunset date, the state pulled back on that requirement and they changed their rules on what critical care would be in the state of Wisconsin. So the, um, a lot of the services that went and did the critical care piece didn't really need to do it because they changed those rules. They, they came back on their, on their levels. So we chose to continue to maintain the critical care piece and make that a standard for, for all of our team members. So all of our full-time staff continue to go through that. The, the process to change that to critical care is just to renew your operational plan with the state. So.
So up, so when we, when we requested the RFP, you were not certified through the state of Wisconsin as a critical care provider?
That's correct.
You are now?
We are not now.
Okay.
But in the proposal, somewhere else in the proposal, it said the licensing needs to be a paramedic level certification. So further down in the proposal.
I, I think.
Are you saying it's not required by the state for your service to be licensed as a critical care in Wisconsin?
Not required at all by the state to be licensed, is that? But later in the proposal, it, it's somewhere in there, I don't have it in front of me. It states you have to be licensed under the state of Wisconsin as a paramedic service.
I'd like clarification from city attorney. I wanna know for sure through the state.
Oh, what's required?
What's required, where they are and where we are as far as who has what certification that's legal to operate the city.
So are you allowed to do critical care in the state without the license? I don't understand.
Well, do, do you know what critical care, what the definition is of critical care in the, in Wisconsin?
What is it?
So you'd have to look at the scope of practice, but it's three, three medication pumps. I think that's the primary, I think that's the biggest thing. Any, any transport that has three or more medication pumps is considered critical care. Certain vents, if you operate a vent, and the, the state has definitions on that, the staff have to be critical care to use that vent. And, and we don't have those vents.
So you have no plans to get certified even if?
No, we, as soon as we update our, update our operational plan, we, we've been waiting for, you know, you guys to decide what you're gonna do. We're gonna have to redo our plan and it's just a matter of updating it.
So I guess my question, if you're waiting, but you're still operating in the township of Hudson and Somerset, but you're.
No, 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 we're, the critical care piece is only for interfacility. It's not for day-to-day operation in the state.
And I don't know if that, is that true?
That's absolutely one hundred percent true.
I'm not saying you, you're not telling me. I, I agree. I don't know.
Yeah, so the different levels that you have, you can't operate, you, you can't operate beyond that level if you're not at that level. You can have variances with your medical director to provide that level of service, which we have under our, under our contract, or under our interfacility transfer, we, we have that approval. So we have the approval to carry different medications, um, different products.
Clarify for me, not to interrupt you, but I did. You can do critical care for the township in Somerset and everybody in Wisconsin.
Critical care is only for interfacility transfers. It's only for doing transfers. It's not for doing nine-one-one.
Yep, just wanna be clear.
Yeah.
I don't know. I haven't confirmed that. I'm.
Right, right.
But I heard that's what he said.
And, and the, the process is just up, updating. You just have to, you know, uh, fill out the paperwork with the state to upgrade it. But you have to, your, your staff have to be approved at that level. I mean, trained at that level through a program that is acceptable by the state of Wisconsin.
Can you recall what section that's in as far as the RFP? Oh, okay, because that might be a big piece.
No, there's a, there was a section in there that it, it was confusing because your title, whatever the page Josh had you read, stated one thing. But then when it talked about the licensing in the state of Wisconsin, it talked about something different.
So are you saying that what, if you update your operational plan to include adding service area for the city of Hudson, would automatically include getting a critical care?
Correct.
Because your staff has already.
Correct. When we, when we, the next time we update the plan and regardless of what you guys' decision is, we need to upgrade it for the town of Hudson. So it will be done at that, at that process.
I'm wondering if we could get a few minutes with Matt Melby, who's been real patient today.
Sure.
From New Richmond.
Thanks, John.
So Matt, thanks for coming tonight. So I just have some pre-listed questions. I think part of it is, there's really three proposals on the table, but I think we keep treating it as like there's two. But one of the things in the RFP was to work or maybe be a part of the New Richmond area association, ambulance association. So my first question is just, and I know you didn't write the RFP, so, but the rates we saw listed that there would be nine dollars and eighty-eight cents for the city of Hudson, six dollars and sixty-six cents if the village in North Hudson wanted in and six hundred and, or sorry, six dollars and twelve cents for the town of Troy. So I guess my question is just, just financially, do those numbers, are those accurate? Do those seem like, is that in the ballpark of what, if we were to, and I know there's a lot of potentials here, we would have to ask and we'd have to be received by, I'm understanding, seventy-five percent of the board. But just numbers-wise, do those seem accurate?
You know, at this time, no, thanks for inviting me back. When these numbers were put together, this is back in November, and quite honestly, a lot has changed.
Okay.
With, you know, how things are operating. When you start pulling the call volume from the hospitals out of the picture, down to the equation, that makes a significant impact on the bottom line. I think you, a lot of your discussion tonight has revolved around that.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the impact, I'll try to demonstrate it here to you. That initial, the, the initial proposal was for a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar assessment. And that was broken down between all the municipalities that I had listed there. By looking at our Richmond's expenditures for the two thousand nineteen budget, what I was given for St. Crey EMS for two thousand nineteen budget, and then looking at the estimated revenues, you're looking at just over a million dollar loss. And the way we operate with our association is that we look at the assessments to cover our loss for a break-even budget. Which means the assessments necessary, without making any changes to how things are operated right now, would be a million dollars. And I broke that down for a fifty-fifty. And I had received an email from Devin looking at some different possibilities, different scenarios. How's it look with everyone's involved? How's it look if Troy pulls out, North Hudson pulls out? And I stopped going through the whole process because quite honestly, the amounts were quite ridiculous. So for example, um, city of Hudson for a million dollars with everyone in would be at twenty-seven dollars, forty-four cents per capita. And basically, everyone's per capita goes up significantly. And it goes above the point at which my association members would be willing to partake in this venture.
Okay.
That's how significant the loss of those transfers are.
Okay. So is it fair to say that the proposal we were given is really not applicable at this point? It, it's not financially feasible? Is that kinda what you're thinking?
If the current call volume stays as it is right now and has it, as it's been for two thousand nineteen, it's not likely. And I've talked to my executive counsel and they have not made a decision. They just said, well, let's do it, wait and see. Let's take a look at the first six months of the year and how things progress. Maybe things might change. We don't know.
Okay.
So it's not written off.
Okay.
It's a wait and see and let's kinda look at the numbers as the year progresses.
And then my other question is about the, the governance board. So, um, I don't know the exact bylaws. We don't have information on that. But my understanding was it was like one vote per town involved or municipality or area.
As it's set up right now, it's one vote per municipality. And then city in Richmond has three votes because they are larger municipality. And I would assume that the same thing would apply to the city of Hudson.
That's what I was gonna ask, is how, how would we be viewed sort of within that? So, so it'd be based more on population or run volume than?
Population.
On population, okay.
What is the population in Richmond?
Uh, population in Richmond's just over nine thousand.
So we're at fourteen thousand, so you're saying that you think the board would be willing to have us have the plurality of the votes on that?
Well, it's not city-owned, so it's all municipalities have the votes. So city in Richmond has three, city Hudson would have three. Everyone else has one.
You think that they'd be willing to give us three?
Absolutely.
Who, and who's, who, who votes on that?
All the members of the board would have to vote on it.
Okay, all right.
And then Matt, for, you know, obviously, we're not a contiguous area with New Richmond. So how would it work with, in terms of where ambulances in Hudson would be stationed or how many, that type of stuff?
You know, we haven't gotten that far ahead because I know that you're looking at a building project that's necessary since across the street's gonna be not available in a couple of years. That's something that's to be looked into.
Okay.
I know Josh is taking me out to the Ward's, Ward Street.
Yeah, Ward Avenue, yeah.
Avenue.
Yep.
And that seems like a good location.
Okay. But in other words, it would be a, it would be kind of like different satellite operations as opposed to, we don't have ambulances coming from New Richmond unless that was some sort of a mutual aid or something or?
You know, the way I view it is, you know, it's auto-aid. If resources are depleted in one location, they get moved around.
Okay, so like a dynamic deployment model, basically?
Similar.
Okay. And then the other question I had was just, the RFP talked about there's benefits. There's great opportunity basically and benefits from joining an association with other municipalities that share ownership of ambulance service. And so could you just talk briefly about what you would see as the benefits overall if, if Hudson was a part of that?
Uh, if you're talking about assessments, you're spreading out the tax base.
Okay.
So that helps reduce, you're spreading out call volume. We use the fifty-fifty formula. So again, it's spreading out cost. Uh, looking at operations, you have the shared resources, group purchasing, yeah, shared staffing. So if someone calls in sick, someone from, you know, you're basically increasing the pool of employees.
Okay. And then just practically speaking, if, if Hudson was interested in pursuing this, what would the timeline be? Like, what would be a realistic timeline in terms of when the board would be able to make a decision?
Well, right now, they said we have to look at six months.
Okay.
For two thousand nineteen. It'd probably be another few months after that. But to implement something of this magnitude, this is a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
It would take, you know, probably sixteen to twenty-four months.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, thanks, Matt. I appreciate it. I, and I don't know if anybody has more questions for him, but we really have to wrap this up. We got ten minutes to get the room ready for the finance committee. Thanks, Matt. All right, um, what do you wanna do? We're obviously gonna meet again. When would you like to do it?
We need another month?
You think we need a month?
That's, that's more of a question.
There's a bunch of things I'd like to start researching that I hadn't thought of before.
Month?
We're not, we're not scheduled on the.
No, we're not scheduled till the eleventh.
So either the twenty-fifth or the week before, right? Not when we start switching days around?
The, uh...
Twenty-fifth is our next, is our, our next meeting.
Right.
Is it mandatory that it has to precede a city council meeting?
It's just helpful. It's not, it's not mandatory, but it's helpful because we're all here.
Yeah.
At least, some of us are here.
So it's, uh, and then we go to the eleventh, is that right, or the fourth? Eleventh? I haven't pulled the fourth off yet. Um, all right, so the twenty-fifth or the fourth, or the eleventh?
Is, is the twenty-fifth February?
Yeah.
I think I'd go with the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the sooner it better, if we can get those numbers sooner.
Yep.
Yeah, I, uh, I would, Josh, think you'd get your numbers by the twenty-fifth?
I think by tomorrow.
Okay, um, Brenda, Devon, anything on, uh...
I'd like to see, um, all of Brenda's numbers redone with the six hundred thousand dollar plan, or the five, maybe five-thirty plan rather than seven hundred for Ward Avenue.
Oh, okay. Point?
Yeah, good catch.
Change the number on Ward Avenue to what?
Five-thirty.
Okay.
The bids you got, we got.
Oh, we have bids of five-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. I can do that.
And if you could write down that it's, you said that the village wouldn't be paying any per capita after, uh, after this year, I mean, that would be very important because I'd, you know, we'd get confused on what's being said as far as, oh, no, that doesn't include that, now it does include that, so that would be great.
In the event that, you know, they do request some additional funding?
I think it's reasonable.
As long as it's reasonable, okay. Just wanted to verify that so that we... Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't yet, but, all right, so we're good, uh, say four o'clock again on the twenty-fifth? Everybody good?
Have you responded?
Everybody?
February twenty...
You're good?
And again, we're looking at whether the transfers are in or out?
Just redoing the numbers, getting, uh, giving, uh, Josh's consultant an option or opportunity to, uh, to redo their numbers.
Sure.
And, uh, corrections with Brenda, or updates rather with, uh, for Brenda with, uh, I think that's about it. All right, everybody good? You have motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?
All right.
Apologies, motion's approved, we stand adjourned.